Okay. Good evening. Let's go ahead and call the Temecula City Council meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Camachero?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Nigard?
Clerk?
Good evening. Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
Here. And I'm out of sequence. But first, we wanted to start by thanking Luke Feng in the back there for our prelude music this evening. And can we have an invocation by, let's see, Mr. Hawkins this evening and a flag salute by our mayor pro tem, Mike Nigard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please stand. To bow your heads and prepare your hearts. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for allowing us once again to gather in a spirit of fellowship. We ask you, dear Lord, to please bless those that are gathered here tonight as we conduct the city's business in a manner that is pleasing to you. We also ask for a special blessing on our police, fire, and military personnel as they respectively keep this community and our nation safe. We give you the glory and the honor and the praise and ask these things in your precious name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag with me and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. Thank you very much. All right. First, we're going to start off this evening with three presentations and proclamations. First up, we have, let's see, Because Nice Matters Week proclamation. And I believe Mr. Ritter, you're here this evening to accept the proclamation. All right. And if you want to join us at the microphone and maybe say a few words?
We have three students with us.
Absolutely. Come on up.
I love your shirt, Tim.
Thank you so much. It's a great honor to be here and to once again share with you the work that's been done. And we were discussing that we believe it's been 12 years now since the work around Because Nice Matters began. It was great, I believe, three years ago that we partnered with the city. And at that time, Mayor Camachero brought in the Temecula Has Heart component to Because Nice Matters. And it really validated the work that students have done. I have Skylar, Serena, and Shelley with me here tonight from Great Oak High School. And if they may, can I allow them to share a little bit about the work they're doing and how it's making a difference in our schools and communities? So, please.
Good evening. I'm Sky. And we work hand in hand with our feeder schools, so the elementary schools, and Vale Ranch Middle School to really emphasize the power of kindness and how it can impact our community and bring us all together to make a stronger, more united one. And this Tuesday, today, we did go to Vale Ranch Middle School to have our kindness assembly with them, which, may I add, was a very big success. We were able to really impact the school, and it appeared that they really took on what we had to say. And with our elementary schools, we are going to, five of them, to really implement this idea that we can be the rainbow in someone else's cloud and really shine with our kindness.
Hi, I'm Shelley. And so, at school, throughout the week, every single day, we have a different challenge that we give to the entire student population. And like, for example, today's challenge was to let someone know how much they've impacted you because we think it's important that people reach out to people that they like know, just like their teachers, their friends, family, anyone, to show that they mean a lot to them. And we have challenges like this every day, and we hope that instills like a habit of kindness, not just for Because Nice Matters Week, but throughout the rest of their lives.
Hi, I'm Serena. And just like Shelley said, we've just been working on really including our students with this campaign. We've also been implementing Spirit Days to get them involved. For example, on Thursday, we will have our students wear purple and black to kind of promote a sense of unity among campus to show that we all have had struggles and been internally bruised. And then on Friday, we'll have White Day, which will kind of symbolize a fresh start. So we really just want to have our students be involved as much as possible and spread kindness throughout our campus.
Very nice.
So if I may just say once again, thank you for coming alongside our students and validating their work in this effort to bring just a little kindness to our community. Thank you so much.
Stay here with me just a second because, and hold those applause because we're going to want to hear them in a second, but I'm going to read a proclamation to you. But I also want to validate what you young ladies are doing because I have a middle school son. He's in the seventh grade at Gardner. And let me tell you, everything you guys are doing at the high school level is trickling down all the way to those middle schools. And really, it's making a difference on those campuses. So I want to thank you because he loves going to school because it's safe and it's nice. Okay? So you guys are really doing great work. So I have a proclamation I'd like to read, okay? The City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas the City of Temecula is in strong support of Temecula Valley Unified School District's Because Nice Matters Campaign of Kindness and Anti-Bullying. And whereas Because Nice Matters is an important message to be addressed by all students in Temecula, as well as the citizenry at large, everyone should make an effort to be nice to one another. And whereas Because Nice Matters includes an anti-bullying component that is critical to the excellent curriculum offered at Temecula Valley Unified School District because no child should ever have to go to school preoccupied with worries of intimidation, fear, and bullying. Amen. And all Temecula students who witness another being victimized or bullied should immediately report it. And whereas TV USD signature colors to raise awareness of Because Nice Matters Campaign that started at Great Oak High School implemented district-wide over several years are purple and black to symbolize the colors of internal bruising that occurs when someone is bullied. And whereas the last full week of September each year is officially called Because Nice Matters in Temecula Week, students are asked to wear purple with black, showing that being nice matters and to take a stand against bullying. On Friday of that week, everyone is asked to wear white to symbolize a new beginning or a fresh start in treating people with respect and kindness. That's this week, isn't it? That's right. That's what I thought. Whereas the collaboration between the city and the school district sends a powerful message throughout Temecula in terms of the notion that nice does matter, not only among our student population, but among citizens citywide. Now therefore, I, Mayor Matt Ron, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim the week of September 24th to the 28th, 2018 to be Because Nice Matters Week in the City of Temecula. And it's signed by the mayor and our clerk, Randy Joel. So I want to, once again, congratulate you ladies, and maybe we could take some photos. Would you guys like to do that?
Yes, of course. We do.
Why don't we, is there anybody here to take photos that?
We do not have anybody.
You do not have anybody? Okay.
There's always amazing things.
Here we go.
Oh, you're dead? Oh, we do have a parent.
No, parents, parents are usually good. But we have Assistant City Manager Greg Butler, and he'll take some photos. Here, why don't you two get on this side of me and you two on this side. I'll hold this up. And parents, feel free to come up. A shot of the big screen. Good job, ladies.
All right. And we have second proclamation here this evening, and I believe Hannah is here to accept the proclamation for White Cane Awareness Day. Is that correct? Yes, you are. Okay. Come on forward. So let me read the proclamation. I'll have Mr. Nigard present it. City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society and to live the lives they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas employers, both public and private, are called upon to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the state of California, through its public agencies and other stakeholders, can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities for and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, I, Matt Ron, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, proclaim October 15th to be White Cane Awareness Day. So thank you very much for joining us this evening. And if you want to say a few words, that'd be great.
Sweetheart, I'll pull that down for you.
First, I would like to say thank you for letting me be here. And I really would, I would like to make sure that everyone is cautious of the white cane and, and, and that, and that people just are, like, look out and, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much for coming out.
Like to say? Is there any more you would like to say?
No.
Okay. Why don't we take a couple of pictures? Okay? I'll turn you around just like this. And I'm going to hold that up like that. Why don't you hold it too? I'm going to go down on one of you. How's that? Great job. Is that? Here we go. Good job. All right.
All right, Hannah, thank you for joining us this evening. And our last proclamation of the evening is for National Dyslexia Awareness Month. And do we have a representative here to, there you are. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and introducing yourself, and I'll read the proclamation. Good evening.
I'm Donna Kizlitis, and I am a legal guardian to a student at Temecula School District who, he is dyslexic. And I just became a legal guardian about a year and a half ago. He's 17 years old. And I used to think that dyslex, I really didn't know anything about dyslexia at all. And he is extremely intelligent. He's very smart, but he's had a really rough life. He's been homeless. And I have done a lot to advocate for him. Excuse me if I get emotional, but he's 17 and a third grade reading level. And kids who struggle with reading and writing, they feel stupid. Many drop out of school, and they follow the school pipeline to prison. I never knew about that. I look at prisoners completely differently now. My son's brother, he's been in prison. He also has dyslexia. I had to hire an attorney. I fought for him. I had to hire an attorney. Many parents have to hire attorneys or have to hire an advocate. But that's where the inequality comes from. The parents who, and I also pay $650 a month for my son to get reading at the Dyslexia Learning Center here in Marietta. I can afford it. To close the achievement gap, if the schools, if there isn't an awareness in saying the word dyslexia and learning about it and the support, what happens is students are passed through the system. They'll drop out. And my son is very fortunate, and I didn't know this happened. I am advocating. I've been at the Taste of Temecula. We have International Dyslexia Association booth. I actually met a lot of students there who are from here, who came to us and said they have dyslexia. They're asking me questions. How do I get diagnosed? I'm like, oh, my gosh. I don't know. I'm learning, but we had a lot of other people from the International Dyslexia Association too. And I am advocating for the parents, for the, to close the achievement gap. And I'm asking, and I will be at city events, the International Dyslexia Association, and we will be bringing awareness to this. So I want to thank you very much. I got this idea from City of San Diego and to do this.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for joining us here this evening. I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas International Dyslexia Association's mission is to create a future for all individuals who struggle with dyslexia and other related reading differences so that they may have richer, more robust lives and access the tools and resources they need. And whereas dyslexia is a neurologic origin and not an intellectual disability. And whereas dyslexia, often inherited, affects all segments of society regardless of race, income, or educational background. And whereas dyslexia affects the way the brain processes information and is characterized by difficulties with reading, writing, and spelling occurring at all levels of intelligence. And undiagnosed cases of dyslexia can be detrimental to a young person's self-confidence, learning, and development. And whereas too many young children with dyslexia do not receive the resources they need, resulting in lower rates of literacy and higher rates of dropping out of school, unemployment, and incarceration. And whereas dyslexia can make reading more difficult, with the right instruction, almost all individuals with dyslexia can learn to read. And whereas greater recognition and understanding are necessary to ensure that individuals living with dyslexia are accurately identified and provided with appropriate services so they can lead maximally productive lives. Now therefore, I, Matt Ron, on behalf of City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 to be National Dyslexia Awareness Month." Thank you.
Here comes Mr. Butler.
Mr. Butler, photographer.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, moving on. We have public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have four public comments on general items.
Ah, general items. Okay. Good. So I'll read the rules. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once a speaker is called to speak, please come forward, station name for the record for all public hearing or council business items on the agenda. A request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the council addressing that item. In that case, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Can we have our first speaker, please?
Our first speaker is Bill Miller, to be followed by Andy Tibbetts.
Mr. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bill Miller. I live in Temecula, and I play pickleball. I'd like to make three points with the City Council tonight. The first point is that there is a very real and growing population that plays pickleball. The pickleball players that live in the City of Temecula have to travel 30 minutes or more. Myself, I traveled south to Castle Creek Permanent Pickleball Courts. They are full four hours a day in the morning, two hours a day in the evening. Then I can travel to Melba Bishop Park in Oceanside. Those courts are full four hours a day in the morning and two hours a day in the evening. There is a significant population that is traveling to those locations that we could serve right here in the City of Temecula. The second point I'd like to make is to dissuade the council from building a couple of pickleball courts in one park and then going and building a couple of pickleball courts in another park and another. That might work for tennis, but it's not the way that we participate in the game of pickleball. We like to gather in large numbers at a large number of courts so that we can have courts set aside for the higher skilled players and a separate set of courts set aside for the lower skilled players. The game of pickleball is always played at doubles, so we need large gatherings of groups to fill a court with four people at all the time, unlike going to a local park and just playing with two or three people like you do in tennis. The third point I'd like to make is if we're going to build it, please no more tennis court conversions. Let's build a truly dedicated pickleball complex, such as I have suggested in my diagram here. I think that in the summer, with our great weather, we could fill this court easily. And in the wintertime, the snowbirds are a prime demographic, which we're going to put Temecula on their destination roster to be able to participate in a dedicated, purpose-built pickleball complex. You could do something like that in phases, but I would say, let's go for 17. So the chant, "Build It 17."
Oh, there you are. Look at that. Idea.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I was wondering why there were so many people here today. It turns out it's for the proliferation of productive pickleball in the City of Temecula. Mr. Hawkins, can we make sure you and I chat about this and get together with Community Services and the City Manager's office?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, we have two more speakers on this item.
Oh, all right.
Andy Tibbetts, to be followed by Julie Snell.
Good evening. My name is Andy Tibbetts. I am a local dentist. I live here in Temecula. My wife and I have four children, two of which go to TVHS. And I also wanted to discuss the, it's considered the fastest-growing sport in America, pickleball. And what it is, it is, it's a very small tennis court. It's two-on-two. It's an underhand serve. It's very easy to learn. It's very enjoyable. And it appeals to all ages and all demographics, male and female alike. I started playing two years ago and recruited about 20 other players, who have then recruited probably another 20 apiece, like a, maybe like a network marketing company. But playing a little bit of competitive pickleball, traveling the country, I've seen a lot of, many cities with large complexes, 20-plus courts. And it's, it's very interesting to see all these people out playing in these groups. Like Bill said, everyone likes to congregate to a specific area, and it's very social. It's open play where you put your paddle up and you, and you play. It's very fun. Canyon Lake recently put in four courts with plans for more. Bear Creek is expanding from four to eight courts. Menifee just added eight courts. They had two, so now they have 10 at Alder Gate Park because of the demand of players. Diamond Valley Rec Center has over 60 players on any given day. Castle Creek, as Bill mentioned, has about 80 players 70 days a week. Not all the same people. Some people go certain days of the week. Metaview has four courts. Margarita Park, a little slot Tuesdays where there's 20 to 30 players. And anyway, I agree, the CRC program, that's full. And I just, most cities report reduced vandalism, graffiti, crime, and fewer tweakers in the park because there's a lot of people playing pickleball, and they're monitoring the space. And so, anyway, the City of Temecula would not regret putting them in, only not putting in enough courts to accommodate the fast growth. And I agree, just to put them all in one place, that'd be the way to do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next speaker is Julie Snell, to be followed by our final speaker, Ms. Miller.
Pardon me for just a sec. I have a few photos. So, good evening, and I am grateful also to be able to put a little shout out for pickleball. Just wanted to say that what my fellow pickleballers have mentioned is true. And in fact, today, I visited these two venues about 15 minutes south. And I just, it's hard to explain the energy and the fun of pickleball unless you're there. And I have no idea the exposure that all of you have had to pickleball. So I would like to invite you to come and learn to play. We, last year, taught your Community Services Commission. We spent an afternoon over at the CRC, and that was really fun. And so they now have been exposed, and we would like to invite any of you to play this game. This is a ball. Anyway, I don't know if you've played, but.
Offy today. You can't just throw things at them.
So, with that, I'd like to invite you to set that up at some point. Also, we are really fortunate, just right here at Indian Wells in Palm Springs, the Nationals are coming to Palm Springs in November at the Indian Wells, which is a really cool thing. And I believe they have 40-plus courts that are going to be used. So it's very evident that this is an up-and-coming sport. And I love that. I love also that people with disabilities can play it. I have a daughter who has Down Syndrome, and we've gone out as a family. I have a brother in a wheelchair. He can play pickleball. I have an 85-year-old father-in-law that beats our teenagers, and he's amazing and competitive. And so it really is an all-inclusive sport. There's just been, there's just a lot of great things, but I hope that you'll be able to have the chance to feel the energy that comes with that game. And what I also can envision down the road, the revenue that could bring to Temecula, instead of us, all of us traveling to all of these outlaying areas where all these courts are built, it would be so great to bring people to us and to offer that. And this great city, you've done so much already, and we just, all of us, who's here for pickleball? We just know that if you build it, if you build it, we will come. Thank you.
Hey, don't forget your ball.
Sign me up for a lesson, will you?
Ball back, Julie. Want your ball?
All right. Hey, it's not everybody who can throw things at the mayor at public meetings, so we let the pickleballers get away with that. But you should have seen the law enforcement in the back of the room, and they were just... No, hey, we'll definitely be talking about this a lot more. I know that our folks at Community Services spent a lot of time with you all last, last year, and so we're, we'll be happy to have that conversation. Thank you for coming out this evening.
There are an awful lot of people who would like to throw things at the mayor and the rest of us, but usually they don't.
I've never seen so many people in here with clubs.
Right.
Our last speaker on non-agendaized items is Ms. Miller.
Evening, Ms. Miller.
Good evening, Dr. Matt Ron. So these young people here speak way better than I do. I just wish that they would speak on my agendas. So if you continue to want to play ball on this planet without electing better officials, you're not going to have a planet on which to do it. So get involved with this election before there's too much CO2 hitting the upper atmosphere, raining down on us and creating too much heat. That's what drove the fire up in Elsinore. The vegetation was too dry. There was no evaporation in it, and the fire swept 22,000 acres and shortened everyone's life because of the particulate matter. So a better candidate is one who's spent his career on the environment, Mr. Kevin DeLeon. So we can move on with other interesting trivia about the election. I'm not voting yes on one and two, because that's for developers. That's for them to put up affordable housing for whatever wonderful venue they choose, but let's do that in existing buildings along with pickleball. I mean, if you knew what Elsinore was doing, the world's largest 18 cubicles of volleyball, pickleball, and basketball on an open space where they should put oak trees, it's just horrifying what they're doing in Elsinore. And you're going to follow suit unless you find some already existing buildings. I mean, from Temecula to Marietta, there's 35 empty industrial buildings that you could remodel. Why isn't that a challenge to developers, to remodel buildings instead of from the ground up where the animals and vegetation are supposed to be here? So I do have these registered to vote. And so what if you are chosen for jury duty just because you filled that out? I know it's not the greatest day, but you know what? Go on over. You can probably be sent out in two hours. So let's register to vote and vote against Ken Calvert and Duncan Hunter. Let's vote for Joy Silver against, you see my time's running out, so I have to move on here. But anyway, against Jeff Stone, he and his horrible wine country plan that is move wineries further east and put tract housing where the grapes should grow and it should keep cooler, and Michelle Singleton against Melissa Melendez. I don't know if that's your district or not, but it's close on the border. And now, things I don't want to say...
Ms. Miller.
But Dr. Matron, you need to vote no on things, or we're going to be out there with Myra Garcia. I mean, we all love you, but I mean, seriously, just because you want to build it green and then I have to do this against that lovely woman there...
Ms. Miller, you're going to have to wrap up. Your time is up.
For Andu Redu. And the reason I'm doing this is because October the 8th, your ballot will be...
Right.
And if you love to vote early...
Who?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment on non-agenda items.
All right. Thank you so much. City council reports. I have seen, Mr. Stewart, you were in the queue first.
I went to the ribbon cutting for the new TRICARE facility in Temecula. So anybody who is an active military soldier, now they don't have to go all the way to Camp Pendleton for their health care. And that's also for their dependents also. And it will be opened up to...
Folks, if, if you could just keep it down, we're still trying to finish up the... God, it's that rowdy group of pickleballers. Come on now.
Doggone pickleballers. It will be open, the pharmacy will be open to current veterans also. But it was, it's a very nice facility, and it's going to be something that I think it's going to benefit the soldiers in our community here for years to come. So it's, it was very cool.
Anyone else in the, in the queue here? No. All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of September 11th, 2018. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of July 31st, 2018. Five, adopt ordinance 18-07, amending section 2.40.100 of the Temecula Municipal Code relating to compensation for city commissioners and board members. This is the second reading at the request of myself and Mayor Pro Tem Nagar. Number six, appoint members to the Community Service Commission and Public Traffic Safety Commission. Seven, approve an agreement with the In The Mix Sound LLC for replacement of the Old Town Temecula Community Theater's audio system. Number eight, approve purchase of fiscal year 2018-19 software support and maintenance for Tyler Technologies Suite of Projects, or Products. Number nine, approve an agreement with Environmental Science Associates for an initial study and sequo analysis for the Paseo del Sol tentative tract map. And finally, item 10, approve an agreement for consultant services with La Belle Marvin Inc. for the fiscal year 2018-19 citywide slurry seal program PW 18-09. A motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes 5 to 0. We'll go ahead and have the Community Service Commission meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight. Do we have any public comment? Okay, we'll dispense with that portion. We have two items under the consent calendar. Item 11, approve the action minutes of September 11th, 2018. And item 12, approve a transfer of $6,000 from the Old Town Temecula Community Theater's operating budget to the Facility Replacement Fund to cover the balance of audio replacement.
Move the item.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Mr. Nagar, you, you just didn't want to vote? Madam Clerk...
We'll go ahead and ensure that the minutes reflect unanimous approval.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know what happened there, but, oh, you say you pressed your button, but I got 4-0 on my screen.
Causing trouble, Mike.
It's a good thing we're friends. Okay. Mr. Hawkins, what have you got for us tonight?
Oh, okay. Mr. President, first, a quick thank you to some future leaders. I think I have a slide. Think I have a slide? Think I have a slide? I have a slide. A quick thank you to some future leaders. Kennedy Jocelyn, Isabella, and Mackenzie Girl Scouts Troop 273. Thank you for your recent visit and kind remarks, and everyone in TCSD says you're welcome. Now, reminder, this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM here in the Civic Center, don't miss the 8th Annual Health and Community Resources Fair. This is a great opportunity to get the latest information about health-related resources and products for children, families, seniors, and individuals with special needs. And speaking of health, I just had to share more slide. And I usually share weekly updates about Temecula with my grandmother, but tomorrow I'm flying out to help her celebrate her 104th birthday.
Oh, my gosh. That is awesome. What a cutie.
Thank you. Happy birthday, my back. And that concludes my report.
That is cool. Do we have a general managers' report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nagar, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quick. You know, it's, it's amazing. It's become commonplace, but didn't we just hold our college fair last Saturday? And, and it's, every year, it turns out to be a super success that we just sort of yawn and go, oh, it just happened again. But you got to give a shout out to Charles Walker, who, who delivers the goods every year on not only this event, but a number of other events. So I didn't want this meeting to go by without giving him a mention, so. And also just pointing out, the event was superb as always.
Over 300 colleges, universities, trade schools, military academies this year. Over 300.
Which is amazing. Held at the Promenade Mall, and not only are students are attending, but they're coming from all over the valley now for this college fair. So, anyway, make sure Charles gets a shout out, okay?
I certainly will. He'll appreciate that.
Any other comments? Yeah, I just have one. Kevin, I can't come close to that her and fore, but my youngest son is 29 today, so I wanted to give him a shout out. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm waiting, Mr. Nagar. We stand adjourned.
All right. Let's go ahead and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We have a few items on public hearing. First, let me read the rules. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 13, adopt a resolution approving an amended and restated ground lease for existing wireless telecommunications antennas and supporting equipment at Paloma del Sol Park. Have a staff report, please.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our risk manager, Robert Cardenas. He's been negotiating the renewal of these leases for existing cell tower sites in item number 13 and item number 14 for quite some time, so I know this is quite a day for him to get this day accomplished. So, Robert?
Great, thank you, Greg. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Robert Cardenas. I am the risk manager for the city of Temecula. The item before you tonight is to adopt a resolution approving an amended and restated ground lease for installation and use of wireless telecommunications antennas and supporting equipment at Paloma del Sol Park. Simply stated, you will be renewing a ground lease. Now, I'd like to point out that it is an existing ground lease, so the cell tower is already constructed. As you can see in the monitor, the, the cell tower is actually composed of two towers with one cabinet. So it's one cell tower, but with one cap, two cell towers with one cabinet. Just a little bit of a background. On December 23rd, 1988, the city council approved the original ground lease agreement. The construction included the removal and replacement of an existing 80-foot ballfield light pole, installation of four panel antennas, reinstallation of the lights on the replacement pole, installation of another 80-foot pole with eight panel antennas, and installation of six cabinets housing equipment. I want to point out that the current restated lease agreement involves negligible or no expansion of the uses authorized by the current lease. The initial term of the lease is five years with a, that will be automatically renewed every five years for five successive five-year terms. So that takes us to 30 years, the year 2048. The rent that was negotiated was $3,000 per month, plus there is a one-time administrative fee paid to the city within 30 days of $48,894.50. In addition, the rent will increase by a minimum of 3.5% annually, beginning October 1st of 2019. I do want to point out that this negotiation was consistent with the Park Preservation Act of 1971, which basically includes noticing the fact that we're going to be renewing the lease 45 days prior to this scheduled hearing. The lease amounts were based on an appraisal and that the funds that we will be generating from this lease will be, will be contributed back to the same park. That concludes my report. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Robert?
How do you do, Jeff?
It's that, that you have the, the date that we first approved it as December 1988, City Incorporated in December 1989. So how'd we do that?
That's reflected in the record.
That's what's in the record?
Correct.
That's impossible.
I, you know...
No, I, I realize it's an error. I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying that should be corrected.
Correct. We'll get it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Let's go ahead and open the, yeah, public meeting. And now, any questions from the council members? No, seeing none. Let's go ahead and, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments on this public hearing item. You're welcome to close the public hearing if you would like.
All right. Let's go ahead and close that public hearing and...
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes 5 to 0. And I think you're up again for item number 14, adopt a resolution approving and amended and restated ground lease for existing wireless telecommunications antennas at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. Sir, please give us a report on that one as well.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The, the next agenda is for the wireless antennas at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. Similar to the prior motion, we will be adopting a resolution approving an amended and restated ground lease for the installation and use of wireless telecommunications antennas and supporting equipment at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. On your monitor is the existing structures at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and this time it's one pole with one housing area. Now, background, on April 22nd, 2002, we were incorporated. The city council approved the original, the city council approved the original ground lease agreement. The construction included the removal and replacement of an existing telephone pole, reinstallation of the lights on the replacement pole, installation of two panel antenna arrays, and the construction of a cabinet to house the equipment. The total lease area was approximately 540 square feet. Similar to the prior agreement, the restated ground lease involves negligible or no expansion of the uses authorized by the current lease. Again, the initial term is five years, expiring on September 24, 2023, and it will automatically renew for extended, and extended for five successive five-year terms. The rent for the Ronald Reagan Sports Park is $2,350, plus a one-time administrative fee for another $48,894.50. And the rent will increase by a minimum of 3.5% annually, beginning October 1st, 2019. Once again, this was negotiated consistent with the Park Preservation Act of 1971, which included 45 days posting prior to this hearing, and the lease amounts that were based on an appraisal, and the funds will be used to improve the remaining portions of the park. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Go ahead and open the public hearing on this one. And first up, I see Mr. Stewart question.
So you said it's a minimum of 3.5% increase. So what, what would make it go higher?
It depends on this CIP index, CPI index.
Okay.
So with the California, based on that, if that goes higher, then it will be higher as well.
So essentially, this is a 30-year lease. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a 30-year lease. There is a one-time, after the first, after the first renewal, we can do a one-time appraisal to see if it actually exceeds past that number, so then we can see if it increases. But in, in no event, even if we do a one-time appraisal 10 years into it, if the rent is found to be lower, it will not change.
Any others? All right. Do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public comments on this item. You're welcome to close the public hearing.
All right. Let's go ahead and close that. And do we have a motion and a second?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Thank you. Cast your votes. And that also passes 5 to 0. Item number 15, approve the city of Temecula fiscal year 2018, 17-18 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Do we have a staff report for that, please? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Ron, and members of the council. I am here to discuss the CDBG 2017-18 consolidated annual performance and evaluation plan, also known as... also known as the CAPER. For quick background and reference, the CAPER is one of our required reports that we complete for HUD each year. The CAPER summarizes and analyzes the city's progress towards completing activities in our annual action plan, consolidated plan, and assessment of fair housing. It also provides an update to HUD on our annual expenditures, and it's an opportunity for the community to comment on our CDBG activities. So, how did we do? The good news is that I have nothing but good news, so that's awesome. The city received an allocation of $515,274 in CDBG funds, plus we reallocated about $140,000 for a total of $655,000 last fiscal year. This table demonstrates our expenditures for 2017-18. So, normally, you don't want to expend more money than you are allocated in a given year, but in our case, this is a very good thing. The $955,000 spent also includes funds from previous allocations. At the end of 2017-18, our ending balance was approximately $273,000, not only meeting our spending requirements for 2017-18, but actually already meeting our spending requirements for 2018 and 19 as well. So, many kudos to Public Works, TCSD, Community Development, and our nonprofit partners on this accomplishment. So, while spending money is great, this money is directly tied to services and providers that are doing great things for our community. More specifically, in 2017-18, CDBG funded 11 unique service providers. The Fair Housing Council assisted 350 clients. The city completed sidewalk segments on Fourth Street, Old Town Front Street, and Inez Road with another sidewalk underway on Mercedes. The Assistance League provided 41 youth with new clothing and school supplies for the new school year. Habitat for Humanity completed 10 rehab projects through their Critical Home Repair Program, which keeps housing affordable. TCSD's New Help Center assisted 11 homeless individuals through their Homeless Diversion and Prevention Program in just the last two weeks of the fiscal year. The Boys and Girls Club provided before and after-school care to six children. The VNW Circle of Care Food Bank provided emergency food to 127 individuals. Michelle's Place provided health care services to 59 women. Hospice of the Valleys provided 25 individuals with hospice care. Kids of Summer SOAR Program had 59 foster children participate in recreational programs, and the Voices for Children CASA Program provided direct advocacy to five foster children. The city and our partners have accomplished a tremendous amount over the past year. And with that, the recommendation is to approve a resolution of the city council, of the City of Temecula, approving the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or CAPER, with the addition of public comments and authorizing staff to submit the report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. That concludes my report, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
I have one.
All right, let's see, do we have to go ahead and open the public hearing on this one as well? And Ms. Edwards?
Lynn, we hear so often about Congress wanting to do away with CDBG, and the National League of Cities has really fought that, as have a number of other groups. Have we heard any, anything this year about the status of CDBG?
We, our guaranteed money for 2018-19, our allocation actually did go up 6% this year, which was relatively surprising, but there are no guarantees going forward still.
Same old news, and--
Same news.
All right, any others? No. All right, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comments on this public hearing. You're welcome to close the public hearing.
All right, close that, and let's--
Move approval of the CAPER.
Motion in a second. Please cast your vote. All right, and that passes 5 to 0. Next up, item number 16, approve an amendment to the City of Temecula Development Code establishing an Affordable Housing Overlay Zone Ordinance that would allow for the development of affordable housing projects on 44 parcels throughout the city. And I see Mr. Peters here this evening to give us a staff report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is LR14-0010, which is the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone Ordinance. A little background on this ordinance. On January 28th, 2014, the city council adopted the 2014 through 2021 housing element. That housing element identifies the city's Unaccommodated Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA number. And that RENA number is a state-mandated process that identifies the number of units each city must accommodate for lower-income households, and the City of Temecula's number is 2,007 units. The housing element also contains 22 programs to address housing adequacy, affordability, and availability. So, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, or the AH Oz, program one of the housing element requires the city to establish an AH Oz to encourage the development of affordable housing and to meet the RENA number. And it also establishes a byright ministerial permit approval process, which is faster than a discretionary review. As for the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, the housing element identified 52 parcels, which had an H for high-density, or PO, professional office zoning designation. The H and PO designations already allow senior and affordable housing projects with densities up to 30 dwelling units per acre, so not, we're not creating new density or rezoning any properties. It's already allowed, with a minimum of 20 dwelling units per acre. And in the housing element, there were 52 parcels totaling just over 100 acres to accommodate the 2,007 units. However, since 2014, half of the 52 parcels have been developed, so staff needed to identify additional vacant land to make up the shortfall. So, what we did was we identified 18 new parcels identified in the Uptown Temecula specific plan area. Basically, that's where the density allows us to identify parcels that can accommodate that density. And what you see before you on the screen is that map. The black dots represent the 44 parcels. The colored areas indicate either specific plan or PDO, so you can see where those affordable properties lie in the City of Temecula, and you'll see 44 parcels totaling just over 100 acres to accommodate our RENA number at 2,007 units. So, what does this mean for property owners? The AH Oz does not restrict development opportunities or change maximum densities already allowed under current zoning. Owners retain the right to develop property based on the underlying zoning regulations. The AH Oz provides a new option, if desired, to develop residential projects with a ministerial process, as long as 20% of the residential units are reserved for household, households earning no greater than 80% of the median income adjusted for family size. The city must adopt the AH Oz to comply with its housing element. So, we've been working with HCD, or the Housing and Community Development Department, and they established an October 1 deadline for us to establish the AH Oz. We went to Planning Commission on September 5th, and we're in front of the city council tonight. Per the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to State Sequa, State Sequa Guidelines, Section 15162, an addendum to the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan, EIR, and negative declaration for the city's housing element has been prepared. The addendum concludes that the proposed changes, additions, or modifications do not result in any new or greater environmental impacts than were previously analyzed. As I mentioned, this went to the Planning Commission on September 5th. They voted 5 to 0 to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance establishing the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone Ordinance, and with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance establishing the Affordable Housing Overlay Zoning Ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peters. Go ahead and open the public hearing, and do we have any questions? Ms. Edwards?
So, Matt, what happens, obviously, this is mandated for the city. What happens if we don't comply?
If we don't comply, what HCD can do is decertify our housing element. That's one option, which essentially would mean we couldn't make findings consistent with our general plan.
I just wonder what the consequences were.
Yeah, and if we're no longer, if we can't make findings consistent with our general plan, then it's, we can't make findings for projects other than affordable housing.
Yeah, and it's like a snowball rolling downhill, and--
Right.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right, any others? Okay, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Evening again. So, this is like a 2,700-unit tract housing, except they're on small acreage, and they're stacked on top of one another. This could lead to 10,800 additional people that need fire services, need medical services, they need water. Okay, where are we going to get that? So, and it's affordable housing, which means oftentimes people become unable to afford them, and then they are relying on shelters, and that sort of is not happening in Temecula, so, you know, that you think that the state is asking you to do this? Or is it that you are planning more unaffordable housing and estate, and more expensive housing, so it's because of you, and the state has nothing to do with it? If you don't expand, if you don't build, they can't come, and we don't need to expand. So, you can laugh at me if you want to, but at least somebody came in here to work through this before small projects start popping up everywhere, and no amount of control on the traffic, should these people have cars, and, you know, no western or eastern bypass will be able to deal with the trucks that'll need to come in here to supply the food at the grocery stores and deliver the Amazon products, and, you know, there are a lot more trucks than you realize when projects start coming in, there's a demand for more goods. And you don't think this violates the SEQUA laws, and you're getting out of EIR, so that's not going to happen. So, you know, the environmentalists will come in here, and they'll question whether you have complied with the environmental procedures. So, the GHG from the heat because of buildings, all buildings create, and gas off heat in one way or another, raising your GHG, and downsizing the ability to grow things such as grapes. You know, this should be important to you, the avocados and the grapes, that's what's really, the Mediterranean climate here is so important. And then you have the bills from those who might not be able to pay their hospital bills, that ends up going to cities overcrowding the hospitals and emergency rooms. So, it's just a snowball effect, and this plan by Luke Watson and Dale West planners of Temecula, we just don't need more buildings here. So, I see it as you're just planning to put in more very unaffordable housing, so you have to tell the state, and then they give you a million-dollar subsidy every time you comply with this activity. What does the wildlife get? Extinction? What does the vegetation get? Overheated, fuel for fires? What did the chub fish and the miraieta creep get? His future is the eggs that he may lay down in the bottom, coming back someday if rain ever comes again. I call foul on this because Temecula claims they've received testimony on September 25, 2018 in their documents, and that's what it is today. You couldn't have heard the testimony until it happened. You fill out papers and say we've already done this, when you know we haven't? You got to stop writing that paper, all right? This much building will become a fire hazard, you know, that could catch on to other neighborhoods. That's a lot of people in different areas with armed stoves, you know, and maybe they had a problem and left the area, and left the stove on, so it can happen. So, you know, the less you have to keep up with, and the fire people and the emergency people, the better off you are. We already have affordable housing. It's all over the ridge across 215, where the mountain lions are trying to cross, and I think if more people had known about this, I saw it in the paper, however, I was working on the election--
Miller, you're just about out of time--
Are you going to cut my sound off? Okay, go ahead.
But if you could wrap up, you've got just a few seconds here.
Where will the funding for the sewer, streetlights, street lamps, streets, schools, public funding come from? The state of California thinks that, you know, they can house the whole world? Is that what's going on? Every town is doing this.
All right--
You can't house the entire world. You don't have the services--
All right, any other public speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we have no other public speakers. You're welcome to close the public hearing.
We'll go ahead and do that. Do we have a, oh, Mr. Colmatero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the speaker's comments deserve some comments in reply. I think it's, there's a lot of misunderstanding here, and what we're dealing with is a process called the RENA process. That's the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that every city, every county has to go through by state mandate. And what happens is, the state calculates the number of affordable housing units that are needed throughout the state, and then it assigns a number, in our case, 2,007 units, that need to be built in order to meet the needs of the state of California. Just about every city and every county disputes the number that they get, because nobody wants to build it. But there's nothing in the ordinance that says you have to build it. All it says is that you have to create zoning to, gives you, as a city, the ability to build these units. There's no project before us, there's nothing that's being built by virtue of what we're discussing tonight, and you have to comply, as we heard from Matt Peters, you have to comply with HCD's directives, or your housing element will either not be approved, if that's what the process you're going through, or will be decertified if you already have it in place. So, we can talk all we want about what we want or don't want to do, but this is strictly the purview of the state. It has nothing to do with what we've already built in Temecula, or what we'll ever build in the future. It has everything to do with what the state tells us the need is statewide, and who has to build what, or at least have the ability to build what, and that's really about it.
All right, well said. Thank you, sir.
I have one more comment, Mr. Mayor. There were some remarks made about who lives in affordable housing and what may happen if, you know, they can't afford to make their house payments. Just to give you an idea, you qualify for affordable housing if you're a family of four and you make $58,000 a year. So, these are, you know, in most cases, not people who are going to find themselves unhoused because of lack of funds. So, these are young families. These are kids right out of college who can't yet afford to put a down payment on a regular house in Temecula. So, it could be our kids, it could be your kids, it could be teachers, it could be police officers, it could be firemen, anybody fresh out of college, and we want those people to come back to Temecula and serve, and be part of our community. So, it is something that's needed, and we have to comply anyway, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any others? All right, we need a motion in a second, please.
Move approval.
And I need to read the title.
Yes, Mr. Thorson.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to add Chapter 17.21, establishing an affordable housing overlay zone, and making the determination that the proposed ordinance is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, long-range planning project number LR14-0010.
All right, a motion in a second, please cast your votes. And that passes 5 to 0. All right, moving on, item number 17, approve an amendment to the City of Temecula Development Code updating the City Density Bonus Ordinance-- Code updating the city density bonus ordinance to conform to density bonus law, Government Code Section 65915. Back again for another report, Mr. Peters.
Back again. This next item is LR 17-1551. It's an amendment to our development code to conform to density bonus law. Government Code 65915 requires the city to adopt a density bonus ordinance consistent with state law that became effective January 1, 2017. It's also a part of our housing element, it's Implementation Program 4, which also requires the city to update its density bonus ordinance. Density bonus is already addressed in our municipal code. We currently allow a density bonus for affordable and senior housing developments, but it's not consistent with the state code. And here's, here's a summary of what's in our development code. Down the left-hand column, you have the different zoning designations. You have high density, medium density, low, medium density, and specific plans. The middle column identifies the density range, so what's allowed to be built, and then the far-right column is the current density bonus. So, following that across the top, if you have a high-density residential project, falls within the density range of 13 to 20 dwelling units, and you provide affordable housing, you would then be allowed a density bonus up to 30 dwelling units maximum. So that is changing, and the new requirements under Government Code 65915 expand the categories for density bonus, and also change how they're calculated. So you can see a much larger table. Again, the categories have expanded, very low income, low income, moderate, transitional, foster youth, disabled veterans and homeless, senior age-restricted childcare, and then donation of land greater than one acre. And then you'll see a sliding scale of affordable units provided, and depending on where your project or where developers' project would fall, within that range, they'd be allowed a, a density bonus based on that sliding scale. The next slide is, it's a simplified version, but I, I think it's helpful in explaining how the density bonus works. So the example is, you have a base project with 100 units, 90 of them would be market rate, 10 would be affordable units, and there would be an eligible density bonus for providing those affordable units, and that would be a 20% density bonus. So, 100 project units, 20% density bonus gives you another 20 units. The end result would be 90 market rate, 10 low-income units, and then 20 bonus market rate units. And that's intended to offset the cost of providing that affordable housing. The density bonus ordinance also allows for concessions, incentives, and waivers, which can be granted for an increase in the amount of required lock coverage, a modification of the setback, or required yard provisions, an increase in the max height, reduction in onsite parking, a reduction in onsite landscaping, or a reduction in the minimum lot area. So you can see between the density bonus and then the ability to request concessions, incentive, incentives, or waivers, how people can begin to make affordable housing work for their projects. There's also a parking reduction as a result of this, and that's set by state law. It applies to all units, whether they're market or affordable, and it's based on the number of bedrooms. So if you have zero to one bedrooms, there'd be one space, or one parking space required. Two to three bedrooms, you'd have to provide two spaces, and then four and up, you'd have to provide two and a half for your project. That's, that's less, less, or you don't, wouldn't have to provide as much parking with this update as you would with what's already in our development code. So it, it is relaxing the parking standards. As for the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to State SECA Guidelines Sections 15061B3, the project is exempt as the ordinance merely incorporates state density bonus law. Again, this went to the Planning Commission on September 5, and they voted 5-0, recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance to amend the city's development code to be consistent with state density bonus law, and staff recommends that the City Council adopt an ordinance to amend the development code to be consistent with state density bonus law. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. All right, let's go ahead and open this public hearing. Do we have any questions? Anyone? Computer's taking a while. Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it for public comment.
We have one public comment, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
So if Mr. Peters could just take my time to explain, if you have higher density, you get a bonus from the state of California? Or lower density, you provide more housing for, for those who are of less affluence than others? Is that what that means? Can he do that? Can he explain the bonus law? I mean, he went into the California Environmental Quality Act, and how it, it doesn't need to be recognized here until there's a project, and then it goes into EIRs. Well, good, but conform with density bonus law, what does it mean? Who's going to answer it? Where did Peters go? He's sitting here. Could you explain that? Will you allow him to explain it?
Just for public comment right now, so.
Due to the Brown Act, I can't speak. All right, well, there are developers in this room, and they would be here if they didn't think they had a chance to build some more things. So I think your delay comments on this are understated. So, you prepared the overlay map, and now they can sink their teeth in because they were given a trillion-dollar, I mean, they were given a tax break by this administration, so they have lots of money to buy property. What are you going to do about that? Can you just hold them off and say Temecula is at capacity? And Ms., Ms. Mary Ann wants, wants to know what that means. At capacity? That means you have more people than you can provide services for. So, emergencies called, police don't arrive as fast as the incident is occurring, emergency vehicles can't get through the traffic, you know, that you're at capacity. You haven't made enough infrastructure to move the traffic, and yet you've put things on marginal populations of animals and vegetation. You already heard me talk about it. You know what I have to say? Say it over and over. You try to belittle what I have to question about all this, and no one else is, because they accept it as what you said, a map only to turn into the city in case you have built too many unaffordable housing. And, you know, is Roy Poe in that? The 2,000 homes that looks like they're on a Mona Lisa painting that should be left totally alone? It's such a beautiful piece of property out there at Butterfield Stage. Such a shame it will be covered over. So, let's see. Anyway, how would I interpret this? That you got something because you built a certain density, and so I don't know if it's high or low. So, what I should have done was do my homework on 17.1, and, you know, I was just here about the election to elect better people, so that people in Sacramento, when they get there, can change that law that requires you to build unaffordable housing. And you're not going to get that with the people that you continue to vote for. So, we'll just go back to not building. Anything, and we're built out, and California doesn't need to provide more housing when it's so dry. And why is that? Because you send up a cloud of gases from transportation every day. And, you know, the, the other things is the, the chemtrails that come back at us, but they're not here right now, because somebody called over and said California was too hot, and we needed to stop that. So that's good, we won't be having a resolution on that. And the other one was the HARP project, and I can't find online what that's doing right now, but that heats up the ionosphere and therefore sends too much heat back on California. Now look at this thing, this hurricane. You think by not heating up the ocean that that's not going to turn into a funnel one of these days and head back to the coast of California? It certainly is. So, I mean, North Carolina has a history of hurricanes, but not like that one. And you understand the animals have passed away there, the water is deeply contaminated, and we've turned this into, you know, a potential cholera problem. We don't want that here. We don't want hurricanes off the coast of the Pacific. And you continue to build, and that's what's going to continue to have the potential. So, let's keep a cap on any further building.
Ms. Miller?
And not contribute.
Your, your time is up.
To the overheated Pacific Ocean.
Thank you. All right. You know, Ms. Miller actually brings up a good point, and that when I, when I was listening to your report, Mr. Peters, I was thinking about you and our new legislative director, Ms. Joel. You know, we're, we're often put in a position where the California State Legislature and our folks in Sacramento put these requirements on us for, which I think are supposed to help with the housing crisis in California, and are supposed to address the, the need for affordable housing in California. And yet, oftentimes, these requirements that we have are somewhat perfunctory, and so we go through the process, but it doesn't provide, with the lack of redevelopment agencies or other incentives, doesn't provide the opportunity for people to, you know, meet that housing portfolio in our city. And so I, I was just kind of curious if there's any sort of reports or anything out there, just, you know, as we go through and, you know, approve this, this other item. Is there, are there any reports or anything that's been done, either through the League of Cities or somewhere, that basically says, look, all the cities are going through these, you know, rote processes of approvals of these requirements and changing their zoning and spending, you know, really, a tremendous amount of effort and time and, and resources and, and money to meet these state requirements, and yet, my experience with them is they don't really accomplish anything, and, and, you know, in particular in our city. But we do it because the state tells us we have to. And so, you know, in our legislative platform, it'd be interesting to sort of collect some of that data, or at least maybe bring it to the attention of, you know, our partners at the League, to say, you know, maybe we should start collecting this data, because we go through this process, you know, it probably statewide is costing cities and jurisdictions, you know, millions of dollars to go through this process, that ultimately doesn't actually address the, the problem that they're trying to resolve in many respects. And so, you know, it'd just be a, you know, an interesting, you know, opportunity for us to see what's been done, what effect it might have, and whether or not there's an opportunity to inform future legislators as they're going through this process and passing yet other laws that require us to go through these types of processes that don't really accomplish what they're intended to. Anyway, that's my only comment on that. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion in a second, please?
Move approval.
And I'll read the title.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask you to close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, thank you, closed. Boom.
This will be an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to adopt regulations to conform with density bonus law, California Government Code Section 65915, and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
There we go.
Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. All right, item number 18, repeal of Chapter 9.60 of the Temecula Municipal Code restricting certain actions and registered sex offenders that have been superseded now by state law and court actions. Can we have a report on that? Do we have a report on that? Yes, we do. Peter?
I will, I will do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, back on November 22, 2011, the council approved an ordinance number 11-09. This provided that on October 31, Halloween, registered sex offenders would be first prohibited from decorating the dwelling in which they reside with Halloween decorations, second, required to leave all exterior residential decorative and ornamental lighting off at the dwelling starting at 5:00 p.m., and three would be prohibited from answering the door of the dwelling and giving to children who are trick-or-treating. At that time, the ordinance was expected to be a significant tool in the city's efforts to monitor registered sex offenders and to reduce the risk of crimes against children. Since that time, however, two things have occurred. First, the court cases and state legislation have called into question the continued validity of that ordinance, and based on the fact that because of the extensive state laws, one court case has said that the state has preempted the city's authority to legislate in this area. The second factor is that the Sheriff's Department relies on conditions of probation and parole and court orders that have placed the same restrictions on registered sex offenders whose crimes involve children. And what this means is that, that the sheriff has the authority to impose these type of restrictions as part of their monitoring of registered sex offenders. The sheriff has not made any arrests or cited any persons for violations of these Halloween provisions because of the state conditions of approval for probation and parole. So, essentially, our recommendation is that you repeal these provisions because they are no longer needed to accomplish its goals, and that those can be accomplished through state legislation.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead. Is this a public hearing item? It is not. Do we have any questions? All right, seeing none. We need a motion in a second, please.
We do not have any comment on this item either, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't think so.
And I will read the ordinance. The council needs to adopt this as a forfeit vote as an urgency ordinance. This is an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula repealing Chapter 9.60 of the Temecula Municipal Code restricting certain actions of registered sex offenders that have now been superseded by state law and court actions.
Move approval.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, first, we have a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Comacher. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. All right, item number 19, presentation of Temecula Police and Fire Department False Alarm Reports. I think we're going to start with who wants to go up to bat? All right, Chief DeHart with our Fire Department. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, and members of the council. So I'm going to cover the background real quick. So, the City of Temecula Police and Fire Department collectively responded to over 9,000 alarm calls from January 1, 2017 to September 1, 2018, and our actual numbers with the combined are over 10,769 calls between both agencies. So, after we reviewed these calls, we recognized a large percentage of these calls were determined to be false alarms and should not have required an emergency response. A false alarm call can be caused by a few different reasons, such as a faulty or malfunctioning equipment, user error, which is common, poor insulation, or lack of maintenance to the system and the equipment. Each alarm activation requires us to send an emergency response, either from the Police Department, Fire Department, and sometimes it requires both agencies to respond to the same call. The false alarm calls created, create a burden on our already limited fire and police resources, which ultimately could lead to longer response time to our legitimate responses, legitimate crimes, fires, or other medical-type service calls that we need. And then now I'll turn it back, I'll turn it over to Chief McConnell.
Thank you. And per the council's direction, the Police Department and Fire Department analyzed the false alarm data, and we determined that there's a significant cost associated with responding to false alarms. The average time spent responding to handle a false alarm could vary from 30 minutes to an hour, and occasionally it might even go beyond that. With that said, this equates to roughly $375 per hour for each false alarm, and that's both for police and fire. It is impossible to quantify the impact to response times to true emergencies. Therefore, fire and police are recommending that the City Council consider introducing an ordinance that outlines and identifies the definition of a false alarm and determines how fees will be structured to reduce the number of false alarms. The ordinance will outline warning steps based on the number of false alarms. The ordinance will outline warning steps based on the number of false alarms received from the same location. And as you can see from, whoop, there it goes. Okay, back up there. From January 1 to September 1, we responded to 9,447 alarms. Of those, at least 98% were false. Most of the alarms came from business locations, 69%, which was 6,362. The business location with the highest number of alarm calls was in the 26,000 block of Inez Road. And we also took a look at burglaries throughout the city to see if the number was higher on Inez, and it turned out that most of our burglaries were highest in the 40,000 block of Winchester and the 31,000 block of Temecula Parkway.
All right. Exciting.
Yes.
Let's go ahead. I really appreciate you guys putting the time in to pull those numbers together. Do we have any questions?
No questions, just comments.
No questions. How about comments? Let's go there.
Yeah, those numbers are huge. You know, we started looking at false alarms even when I was back on the Traffic Commission, and I think it's come to the point where we're looking at 9,000 a month, or I mean 9,000 between January and September. That's just incredible. And the number of man-hours that it takes, and who knows, when they're on those false alarms, how many double calls do we get for real emergencies at the same time? I think we need to really, I think it's time to consider imposing fines.
All right. Any others? Ms. Stewart.
I do have a question. So you just brought up a good point. So if there's a false alarm, or if there's an alarm on like a business or whatever, does a emergency call for like a fire or an accident take priority over those type of incidences?
Well, the alarm call ends up being a high priority call. So we typically try and get there, and I believe fire is in the same situation that it's a high priority. And it, you know, if it's a 211 at a bank, then we're sending at least four officers. So they have to set up their perimeter, and then they actually call someone out of the bank. So more time is spent on that type of call.
Do you actually get bank false alarms?
134.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of shocking.
And they call you at home.
Lot of user errors that takes place, and that's part of our intent, is we need to curb this user error.
Yeah. Wow.
Good. Well, you know, I really appreciate you putting the time in for this because, you know, as I think it was a nice change this year to have both police and fire join us at the dais and then monthly report out on our statistics on both fire and PD. And I think that was one of the more obvious things that we saw in the monthly reports were the number of false alarms that you were responding to. And so, you know, bringing together the data, you know, to date, I think it's stunning. I mean, we're, you know, close to 10,000 calls, false alarms. Now, genuinely, some of these, you know, they're weather-related or other issues that, you know, we, you know, we can't blame the owner, the property owner, or the homeowner for. But, you know, there's a lot of these that are confirmed false alarms. And, you know, in my conversation with the both of you, a lot of these are because of either user error or just a lack of maintenance on their own system. And the lack of diligence on the side of our business owners or homeowners is costing us, you know, potentially tens of thousands, if not more, per year in response, but also keeping police and fire off of, you know, other calls that are frankly a priority. You know, and I know that it's, you know, your responsibility to treat every call as though it were, you know, and you don't get to make that distinction, even if it's the fourth time in the same week that you've had to respond to the same location. And so it's really unfortunate that we have, you know, what I would consider at this point bad actors, because I'm sure, I know the businesses are notified that you're out there, and they're just not doing what's necessary. And frankly, if they, you know, can't maintain a good alarm, either, you know, get rid of the system, or, you know, we're going to have to find some sort of, you know, fine system to either recover our costs or, you know, make it arduous enough for them to invest what it takes to have a good system and trained employees or property owners that don't cause these violations. So I know the staff recommendation is all about, you know, seeking an ordinance or developing an ordinance to address this for both business and residential use. And so, you know, I wholeheartedly support that because I think we need to, we need to do that. My last statement is that I'd like to also see us make sure that once we identify and implement that program, that we do sort of a year-over-year comparison or however we could to sort of see the success that it has had in response times and, you know, sort of eliminating those additional costs and burden on our system. So, Mr. Comatero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I assume as we compile all that data, we have the ability to know where multiple calls are coming from the same location.
Yes, and we have identified our top businesses, and then also the same thing with the top residents, that the numbers are staggering.
I can imagine, I mean, that 9,400 number just blows us all away. But as we look through development of an ordinance here, I mean, one of the things we can look at is to maybe give the first-time offender a pass and a call or a follow-up saying, you know, "Do you know how to operate your system?" and, you know, whatever. And then go ahead after that. I think they've had their grace period and, you know, some kind of a graduated system as they keep doing it to have it be really onerous. And I think that if we can get a group together to go out and counsel these people, I know that's time and expense, but it may be a whole lot cheaper than responding to all these false alarms. I encourage us to jump on that.
All right. Any others? Well, again, you know, thanks for bringing that back. Apologize, I had to, you guys crunched all the numbers and put all that together, but it really does help in our ability to move this forward, and hopefully in the long run it helps you, you know, do the job that you need to without being distracted by, you know, careless property owners.
It helps in shock value alone.
Absolutely.
Seriously. That's a huge number.
All right. So we're looking, move the staff recommendation and looking for a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
All right. Let's go ahead and cast our votes. I'm just going to predict that this is going to pass 5 to 0.
Dangerous.
I called it. All right. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and Commissioner Reports. Start with Public Safety, Traffic Safety Commissioner. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Commissioner Sullivan should be back next meeting. We're hoping to see him at Public Safety on Thursday. So he's on the mend and looking pretty good, so he'll be back. Other than that, nothing from Public Safety.
All right.
Thank you.
Lee, Planning. Good evening.
Thank you. I was going to just say thank you for the ratification, the work that the planning commission put into Items 16 and 17. It was good discussion, and beyond that, nothing to report.
All right. And Community Services.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, council. I have a brief slide. Of course, we have a slide.
Hey, we just read our mind. Weird.
So on Sunday, the 16th, we had our, this is the Second Annual Fit Fun Color Run. This event started 10 years ago. It's just the Fit Fun Run. It's sort of evolved over the years, which is something that I think that we do well as a department. We've taken this run and, over the years, has sort of, you know, how can we make it better? We're always looking to make something better. So this year, we had over 500 participants. This is a great, fun day for everyone in the community to come out and enjoy. Myself and Commissioner Borgeson were there, and we spent the morning. We didn't run. We wandered around and talked to people, and you really could feel that everyone was excited and glad to be spending their morning with friends and family. And as you can see, everyone was excited. The kids' race was fantastic. So just a couple little tidbits. The top finisher, the top male finisher was a nine-year-old. Justin Lee won that division. And then the top female finisher was 13-year-old Alyssa Marie Sampson. So the kids thoroughly enjoy themselves, and it was just a great morning in the city. So kudos to staff for taking an event that's been going on for quite some time and really kicking it up a notch and making it an exciting event. And then, lastly, I'd just like to say thank you for reappointing myself and Vice Chair Nelson to the commission. That vote of confidence means a lot to us and the department, so thank you.
All right. Absolutely. All right. I think we, did we cover our public? You have something for us tonight?
Well, I do have something a little special. I can't outdo Zach with his slides, but I have a special guest who's here to come back and say hi. And we so appreciate all the community support and prayers. Deka was very ill, and we almost lost her, and we're very thankful to see her back again today. And so she had to come and say hi to everyone.
Want to attack the mayor again? Huh?
I have bacon in my purse.
Wow.
She lost a lot of weight, so she might need that.
She did.
Back on duty, or?
Not quite yet. We're still working our way through rehabilitation. She's, begrudgingly, I will say that she's out of the woods because pretty much every step of the road, she's kind of surprised us, and I'd rather keep it that way. But every expectation we had, she has surpassed. At this point, she's just happy with driving me crazy at home. A Malinois is not a good creature to keep inside of a house.
No.
She wants to do. So that can be down the aisle way here, and all she wants to do is. I will say personally, I just want to say the support that we have from the city, the support we have from the department, the bond between handler and dog is not really something that can be quantified very easily. When you go into danger with an animal at your side, a lot, you start to think like them, and they start to think like you. And a lot of seeing her injured and a lot of her not really knowing how it happened or why.
That's scary.
It's definitely a draw on someone. Have that support and have her be able to come back to full health, it's been nice. And we've got a long run ahead of us, probably at least another month of rehabilitation, but I fully expect her to come back to work.
Great.
Oh, thank you.
Just a quick question, if you don't mind indulging me real quick, but you're still on duty, obviously. You're not off duty while she's recuperating, correct?
Correct. There was a couple of weeks there where I had to be watching her 24/7. In those times, I was just taking calls from the house, but recently I've been just out working at Patrol B.
And so she watches you leave? And how does that work? I mean, can you see it on her face, like, "Why are you leaving without me?"
Yeah, well, when you see it on her face, you hear her barking, and you know those collapsible kennels at Petco? Yeah. I've gone through two. And pieces, and she's on the couch, relaxing. You definitely, you definitely see that.
And we never did learn what happened. She was septic, but we don't know why.
Best guess, dogs are a little different than people. They have three different pockets on their bodies. There's kidneys, abdomen, and chest. Because there was an access in all three of those pockets, and some of the cultures that they drew from it were plant-based bacterias, best guess is a fox tail got into her skin at some point. And the way a dog's skin moves, it's a little different than us. They have a skin layer, fat layer, muscle layer, and the way their bodies move, they all kind of move in different directions. So if something gets in between there, it actually creates a path all the way through the body. And so best guess is that's what happened, and because she's a Malinois, they don't show us very much pain. So they'll push through a lot of pain that most animals won't, most people definitely won't. So by the time I even knew there was an issue, we had about three days before her blood and body started breaking down.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow. It's a relief.
I'll keep her around in the back. I'm watching you guys anyway, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, one of them say hi.
All right.
Although I kept trying to recruit her, I told him he can bring her to my office, and she can just hang out with me all day.
She is alert and ready to go.
Good. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
And that's it?
That's it. Well, that was a wonderful report. All right. Let's go ahead. City Manager, Mr. Butler.
The only thing, I'll jump on the bandwagon that Mrs. Miller started today, is actually National Voter Registration Day. So if you haven't already, you can go online and get yourself registered to vote for this election, correct? All right. That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Butler, Mr. Thorson.
Yes, we had three litigation items in closed session. There's no reportable action. I will note for the record that Councilmember Nigard did not participate in Number Two and Number Three.
Okay. Well, looks like we're coming close to the closing the evening.
Move approval. I'd rather move adjournment. Let's move something.
Something. Second.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. There we go. See you next time.
Thank you. Cut you down.